President of the Board meeting, President of the Board of Trustees, Village of Burnham, County of Illinois. Time now, 7:00 PM. I'll ask for the call roll.
Trustee Cap?
President.
Trustee Bonner?
President.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
Trustee Claybrook?
Here.
Former president of his family, President of the County, President of the Public.
As President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any approval or corrections of the minutes that was held, Danway 2620.1? Any corrections to the minutes? Any corrections? So I will ask for a motion to approve the minute that Danway 2620.1.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Motion to approve that trustee cap, do we have a second?
I second.
Second, trustee bond, by technical.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. The minutes approved, before we open the session to the public, I want to state a couple of things. If there are any questions, the audit that we did here a couple of weeks ago, we would like you to put your questions in writing, put your question in writing, get them to the village hall by this Friday. And for the next meeting, we'll bring the CPA here, we'll try to address those questions. You know, so everybody can get an understanding, we got a lot of confusion, a lot of misinformation. So if you want to get it from somebody who's a professional and really knows, who's been involved in the process, so.
And how many questions about that?
Well, I would think that each question shouldn't have no more than two questions, but they want to put them all in yellow, maybe just submit them together, you know.
And the CPA be at the next meeting?
Yeah.
So then they give you another questions to village of Burnham?
Yes, yes.
At Burnham-I-L dot org, I mean, dot gov, I'm sorry, let me say that again, village of Burnham at Burnham-I-L dot gov.
Okay, thank you, sir. So at this time, I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Motion for that trustee Claybrook, do we have a second please, calling to the public?
Second.
And then for trustee Garcia.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Motion to adjourn the meeting to the public, if you have a comment to make to the board, or if you please will do that at this time, anybody have any comments?
Well, Mayor, I'd like to know how you came about the hundred and seventy-five dollar credit?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, can you state your name?
Carol Dill.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
I want to know how you came up with the hundred and seventy-five dollar credit on water bills for only the people that got meters.
Okay, are there any other comments?
And if, if, that's not fair, we all pay a water bill, just because we don't have meters, doesn't mean that we shouldn't be involved in that also. You've got a lot of apartments, and you've got the mobile home park that all pay water bills, so where's the fairness in that CARES Act? The other question, what happens to the remaining four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that's left out of that CARES Act money? Where does that money go? Have you come up with a schedule on the sewer cleanup yet? I asked two weeks ago. Cars are still parking at the stop sign, one of the residents in the park almost got creamed on Chippewa and Burnham. Nine residents without power, February twenty-sixth. Three of those residents had computers and TVs blown out once the service was turned back February sixth, lot thirty-one, no power, veteran on oxygen twenty-four seven. Called the police, and the reason we call the police is because they can call an emergency number with COMEd. We can't. All we get is automated, the police can get through. Cops never showed up for two hours until another resident called to complain about the electrician working on the meter boxes. Then the cops showed up. I need answers.
Okay.
And may I also add that if there's ever a situation in the summertime or the wintertime where you don't have electricity, or you don't have adequate heating, or even too hot in the summertime, always know that your public buildings are warming shelters and cooling shelters, and, and, and there are generators for power shortages and things like that in case of people that not necessarily needing nine-one-one emergency, but may need temporary respite for that time.
Don't you think that information should be given out to the residents of the village?
I, I, I just, absolutely.
I've never seen anything like that, but as a matter of fact, we get, we get very little information in the park.
Are there any other comments?
The buildings are closed, so how would you even use them?
Yeah, we can't get anybody on the phone.
They used them at one point, no, I, I have, I have something, I was waiting for your question was done.
Okay, go ahead.
Somebody told me that there was a, you know my name and address, I don't have to give it to you, no I won't, um, somebody told me that.
If you don't give your name, then I will not recognize, that's the procedure, would you give your name to me?
You got to know.
What procedure?
I'll ask for a motion.
Gerald Hunter.
Go ahead.
Okay. Somebody told me that there was a clerk's only parking, uh, put in front of Lucy's house with a pole, I don't, I hadn't seen it for myself, but then they said it stayed up there for a little bit, then it was removed. My God, the village didn't put up a clerk parking only sign in front of the clerk's house, I could imagine that being something somebody would do, not thinking that that would be, uh, uh, not, not the right thing to do.
That's not true.
I'm talking right now, I, I'm just saying that's what somebody told me, I'm asking you, you want to make a.
Where was it put, Gary?
Right in front of the clerk's house, is what they told me. Okay, that's what somebody said, I couldn't believe the village doing that, said clerk parking only.
The vote.
I've also noticed, uh, in front of the clerk's house, that there's an extension wire running from her house onto a telephone pole across the sidewalk, and then down the telephone pole, and I wanted to know if that would be all right for me to do that, I was thinking about running some extension lines to the telephone poles and the streetlights by me, and then I was gonna put up just lit signs and stuff like that, so, I want to make sure that it's all right for me to do that as long as the clerk can do that by her house. Um, I'm, I'm not finished, I'm just, I'm just thinking, because you got me out there there.
You mean they didn't power from the pole?
I don't know, there's an extension cord running from her property across the line, and then down onto the ground, may, maybe it's, I don't know what it's for.
Do you have any other, you got one?
Yeah, I do, I'm, I'm making my count, it hasn't been three months, um. Hmm. Oh, I, I have noticed that, uh, the companies that, um, have now opened up next to Condufs on a Hundred and Forty-third and Green Bag, um, boy, they all look like repo companies to me, uh, I have noticed that they park cars wherever they want, they're parking them in the parkways, if you look down, Green Bag past Hundred and Forty-third where the cars are required to put them in the yard, there's now been three cars that have been dumped there, I figured I'd wait just to see how long before the village throws some toe stickers on, it just makes the people put their junk cars in the yards at least, instead of parking on Burnham property.
Are you talking about?
It's been two, I'm, it asked me after, it's been two weeks, so nobody's, uh, nobody's touched those yet.
Are you talking about at that, at that factory, the storage house?
Yeah, but down, where the yards are.
With overhead doors? With overhead doors?
Look right down Green Bay, past Hundred and Forty-third.
So we're supposed to cover that, and they're doing some work inside, so they just temporarily set.
No, not that building, all the way down at the end, there's cars that, they're dumped because the yard's too full.
Yeah, the, the, the police department's also working on that, getting rid of those parks too.
Cool, well, that's, that's good, that's good to know, that's, that's my question, if somebody see it, because I don't like to pass by everything and have to call it, and it makes me feel like, well, what the heck, you know, why aren't the people?
Do you have anything else to be free men?
Do I have anything else? I don't hear you.
Do you have anything else to be free men?
Um, yeah, I would like to tell you, good job on the grocery store, I mean, that's, I think that has to be the first really good business besides the gas station and the scrapyard, you know, for a lot of years, but, um, you know, I, I'm happy to see it happen, I'm surprised to see it happen, but whoever was responsible for that happening, uh, good job, that's all I have.
I don't think you have to give, so I'm going to go.
Andrew Johnson, uh, yeah, I want to know if you, Mr. Mayor, or any of your other people, uh, have either a name and a phone number where you could, people over sixty-five can go and try to register for their first COVID-nineteen shot.
It should have been in your water bill, did you get your water bill?
I, I didn't get mine.
Maybe.
It came out today, or yesterday.
There were mail, water bill came today.
Yeah, today.
Well, maybe, maybe thank you for that today, I didn't see, uh.
This is Johnson, Walgreens start Thursday, you can call and set up an appointment at Waldron.
Now, down at Tarrant?
I mean, CBS, CBS.
I told you, I don't, no way did you put a clerk's parking over.
Well, it's like, Walgreens, you can start, we make the appointment tomorrow, and Thursday you can start calling CBS, they'll start setting them up on Thursday. And, and.
Okay.
Jill's, I saw, because my sister-in-law got her shot today.
Okay, thank, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Wait, she.
I'll make the motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion for that trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public, do we have a second please?
I think someone might, might have wanted to say something, did she, was that your fault?
She wanted to say something.
The lady next to you, right?
Yes.
Yes, I think she still wanted to say something, she didn't make it.
All right, ma'am.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm new to Burnham, and I'm new to where I'm living at, and.
Can you state your name, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, primary league Richardson. Um.
Did, did primary league Richardson?
Yes.
Oh, wow, okay.
Uh, I'm kind of speechless because, um, I can't even believe we have a meeting because of stuff like this, but anyway, um, where I live at, I live in a mobile home, and when I first moved in there, there are wires from Comcast hanging down in my backyard, so I can't let my grandson go out there and play because these wires are running along the ground, and I complained about that, I thought when they came out to put the cable in, that they would hang the wires up or something, because I thought you always hung them up. No, they didn't do that, and then the other day when they came out, I thought they were gonna fix the wires and get them up off the ground, but all they did was just make longer wire, so it's still on the ground.
Okay.
Uh, and if you try to walk through there, you're tripping all over this stuff.
Yeah, but we are looking into that, we have not, we haven't got a response, from the only yes, and we had to dig snow and cover everything up.
Okay. There's, there's a lot of other issues going on there too.
Are we aware of, what's your trailer number?
Thirty-four.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The motion for, I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I'll make the motion to close the meeting to the public.
Motion for that trustee Richardson to close the meeting to the public. Second, trustee cap.
Trustee cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn the meeting to the public. Um, I would like to, uh, I would like to correct a mistake that I made, uh, several meetings ago, uh, I said the, I said the auditors made the recommendation that we adjust the water rate for the village, it was not the auditors, it was CPA, so I would like to correct that.
Could you repeat that, please, we can't hear you.
I said that I wanted to correct a mistake that I made at some meetings ago, and I stated that the auditors is the one that made the recommendation that we adjust the water rate when we increase them, but it was not the auditors, it was the CPAs, if I want to correct that, that I made the error. Um, and again, with that being said, the auditor will be here next, he put a meeting. Um, we have a COVID testing date on the, on Saturday, that'll be here, that'll be from eleven to three, right here at the community center on Saturday, this afternoon.
December what? December, uh, February thirteenth?
Yes, and the COVID testing, again, um.
At what time is the free?
Yes.
What time is it?
That's from eleven to three.
And you said it's free?
Yes. Um, as far as the, uh, the CARES money and, uh, and wanting to the water bill, um, the people that owe, the people that have water counts, they owe money to the village of Burnham, and we cannot take governmental money and give it to private, uh, for private uses, so if you have a water account, and the county just the village of Burnham, then that is higher decision they made, and that was to assist the people during a time of a pandemic, so, again, you would have to have a water account, so just like, we don't owe AT&amp;T any money, right, we can't pay anybody's cell phone bill, like, we can't pay your light bill, but your water bill is owed to the village of Burnham, and so it's one government divided to another government divided. Okay, now, for the sewer cleaner, and that process, and he is continuing, uh, like I said at a couple of meetings before, all the sewers cannot be cleaned at one time, just like we came, just like we came to pay all the streets at one time, we came to pay all the trees at one time, like, we came, we just came to pay all the sidewalks at one time, so we have to do it in seconds, you know, and sometimes we clean the sewers when they needed to be cleaned, but if we just clean a sewer, clean the sewers all the time, I mean, you know, that would be old.
Do you have any schedule when the east side's gonna be done?
Um, we have to wait for warmer weather, and they have to have temperatures above freezing.
Your store was cleaned all the time, yours was probably cleaned six, eight years ago.
I just had the overflow vacuum down.
Yeah, but now, Chippewa, Chippewa, well, see, Chippewa freeze is a weird time, and we should have it done more often, because you will.
You want me to respond to your comments in the meeting list?
Just please.
Uh. The cars at Burnham and Chippewa, um, I believe it's all around sales cars, so we'll take a look, it's all the boulder, but you may not check for that.
They had one today, they had, parked, had, had stopped certain.
Okay. I believe the signs says no parking, get a corner.
It said, "Refused to," and they were passing.
Okay. Um. You know, but I'm gonna go ahead, if you want me to answer your question, you kind of need to pay attention, so, you know, man, uh, you would mention about the, uh, about the power being off for the, for the governance on oxygen, where the village of Burnham does not control that at all, and many of the issues that you have there, were the issue that we talked about before, and they are, they are actually private issues between you and the owner of the property, and we cannot just arbitrarily just come in there and dictate what needs to be done, it's just like my house, you can't come into my house and tell me what to do, but by the same token, I can, well, then the village is not authorized to come there and just give authoritative orders, you know, as to what should be done there, now, if there are violations there, we can try to address them, but many of the issues that I've been told, I've been told by more than one person, because it's in your lease, I mean, for you to take care of certain things, and certain things happen, and then, and you bring people here sometimes, and it seems like you try to make the village responsible for it, but it's not like that, and I've been told about several people.
My comment back to you is, when the sewer backed up on my place for eighteen days, both sides had crap floating in the yard, you talked to the landowner, he lied to you and said that it was our responsibility after three licensed plumbers were on that property, and all three told him it was broken sewer lines underground, that means it is the landlord's responsibility, not the owner of the mobile home.
If the waste was on top of the ground, then it was not underground, if it was on top.
It was broke underground so that everything was floating up.
But then that would be a different story, okay, but, uh.
Well, if you spent a little more time on the east side, you might know a little more about it.
The village's recourse.
I know quite a bit about the east side.
He supposedly gave three citations.
I'm gonna go ahead, uh, we're about to close the meeting to the public, I'm sorry, I just sent the mail before. Um, I think you had mentioned about, uh, the car parking, so we're gonna take a look at that, I explained about the cap money, I explained about the sewers, um, I believe that was there, and the veteran, that you said that the power went off, but we don't have any control of that, and when COMEd power goes off, then that falls on the village, so we contact COMEd, and they come out and try to get that as well, because the only issue there is why the power went off, you're pressing the power, and I don't really know how that works, um, then, then it's not holdout, it's a loop right there.
Reuseless.
And if you have an emergency there, if you have somebody there, you know, who needs to come and sit at the village halls where they can get some oxygen, so they can get some electricity, then I promise them we could accommodate, you know, so, uh, okay, um, so, uh.
So please don't ever need to call the cops.
And also, I wanted to, um, I received this in the mail today, it's at my door, and it talks about, uh, about the hundred and seventy-five dollars was approved by co-county board's president, Tony Prankwinkle.
What is that?
I mean, that has nothing to do with anything, that is completely false, um, in that Burnham though, I mean, eleven million dollars found out, that's nothing but a lie, that's not true, and people gonna resurface alleys and stuff like that, you have to understand that certain alleys in Burnham, that you could not resurface them, you can't put asphalt in the alleys, many alleys don't have sewers in them, and if you put asphalt in the alleys, then all the water will go into people's garages.
Untrue.
The way it is now, the water can soak in the ground, it's not much that people don't understand.
Man, Chicago's have sewers in their alleys, nobody in Chicago does, the village put those sewers in alleys a long time ago, four years ago.
You have your time to speak.
I'm just telling you.
And it sounds real good, and people campaigning, and they putting stuff, and they putting stuff on, because it sounds good, I mean, but it's not true, it's not true, and, uh.
Lies, lies, and lies.
Just making noise, just making noise, and it's almost like a, I mean, cocked at your philosophy, so, um, and the village clerk that we had before, she was not my village clerk, because she was here twenty years before I came to Burnham, so she was not my village clerk, and I never stole a dime from anybody, neither fifty cents my grandfather fifty years ago, I mean, but I do not steal, so I would not have to give in counter to the heaven and father, amen?
Amen.
Okay, with that being said, now we're using a report from Lucy.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to mention, um, here, that, um, mayor, um, so, we received from the county, we applied with our, this administration, we applied for the county care relief fund, we had to apply, we had to go through the whole procedure, and we were approved, and that's how the hundred, and then the hundred and seventy-five that mayor mentioned last meeting, the hundred and seventy-five were credited to all the water it fills this month, and your invoices went out this Friday, attached with it the receipt of the credit of a hundred and seventy-five. Um, also, on Monday, the clerk's office will be closed, um, in the service of President's Day, and to, I just want to make comments to what Gerald Hunter said, you need to find out your facts, don't be like Trump and be a liar, find your facts, and do not say what is untrue.
What did I say?
Look at yourself in the mirror.
What did I say? What was untrue?
That's all I have.
You both say stuff's untrue, but you don't say what.
Okay, thank you, clerk, for that report and, uh, your information, and the grant we had to sign for, I had to put my name on the dotted line for that grant, Robert E. Pope, and I was gonna make sure that it not go to somebody that was not entitled to it, now, if anybody got it, they don't want it, they can give it back. Okay, um.
I can't believe they would say that, why would you bring up them?
I'll tell you what.
I'm telling you, Democrats are evil, man, they're frickin' evil. The real Democrats.
Okay, um.
Thank you, thank you.
I've been getting, you know, saying whatever, trust me, Greer.
I truly believe it.
February is a very busy night, there are a lot of holidays in the month of February, we have Lincoln's Birthday, Valentine's Day, President's Day, Ash Wednesday, Washington's Birthday, and Black History Month. Now, the significance of Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by African Americans, and at a time of recognizing the central black history in United States history. Just to name a few, we have Adam Clayton Powell, he was the first African American who held the most powerful position in Congress, and then Betsy Holmes, she was the first female pilot of African-American descent, and she was the first Native American to hold a pilot license. Frederick Douglass, he was an author, orator, and advisor to presidents between the years eighteen ninety and nineteen fifteen. Mae Jameson, she was an American physician, she was a NASA astronaut, and she was the first Afro-American to travel in space. Last but not least was Rosa Parks, she was often called the mother of civil rights, she refused to give up her seat to a white passenger on a public bus, this initiated the beginning of the civil rights movement, and there were many, many more in our, in our history. As of February nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the state of Illinois, there were reported twenty-one thousand eight hundred and two deaths to the coronavirus. Starting next week, the United States government is to ship the COVID-nineteen vaccines directly to community health centers. Remember, this is not a joke out there, people, remember to wear your mask outside of your home, social distance, and avoid gatherings, and wash your hands. Now, there are many, many questions out there about the virus, about the vaccine, some are for, and some are against, but for those who are interested in receiving the vaccine, uh, there's ways to register, some people do not have a, um, a laptop to get on the, um, internet to do it, well, they give you a number to call, and they, they will help you, it's eight six six four four three two five eight four. For general questions about the COVID-nineteen, you can call this Illinois hotline, one eight hundred eight eight nine thirty-nine thirty-one. You have to, don't get discouraged, you have to continuously call these numbers if you're interested in receiving, uh, the vaccine. Walgreens, yes, is giving the vaccines out, not all of our, uh, Walgreens are giving, giving the vaccine, same with CBS, not all are giving vaccines, you have to register, you have to have a number, again, don't be, um, disencouraged, you have to keep trying, you have to call all types of the night, all types out today, to get your, just say ID number in order to receive your vaccine, yes.
Ms. Richardson, you said that eight six six four four three two five eight four will help people make that connection to get registered for the vaccine?
Yes, I, I, I'd be very cheerful with you, I received my vaccine on Sunday at Walgreens, so, um.
Your first dose, or?
Yes, my first one, and I'll go back, uh, March, the same time, and receive my second.
Is that the Walgreens on tour?
Yes, 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 right there, and, um, it's an experience, it's an experience that goes with.
Did you wait long?
No, no, they'll give, they'll give you a time.
A time?
Yes, they'll give you time, and they'll take you right away.
And that's trustee Greer, Greer, not Richardson.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's Greer.
That's okay, that's okay. Okay, so. Okay, so that's it for me. Anyone have any other questions about the vaccine?
I'm taking the trust of the ground. Hey, Karen, I believe that you get the letter that we cut out on, um, on the weekend, the flyer?
What flyer?
You didn't get the flyer, did you?
No.
Did you get it, man?
We're a forgotten little raffle, I guess. What was the flyer about?
It was about the COVID vaccine and about the.
No, we got nothing, as usual.
How did you get it?
I should have been in your water bill.
You didn't get it either?
I was in your water bill, I was in your water bill.
We don't get a water, and you don't want a water.
You didn't get the water bill yet?
Uh-uh.
Mine just came today, so leave it tomorrow. Yeah, they just came today.
All right, thank you. Um, I have the Works and Bill, trustee Cliver.
Oh, good evening.
Good evening.
Only thing I have to, uh, pump the Works Department for the past three or four days has been out, plowed, snow, salted, and everything. And also, we have a lot of narrow streets in Burnham. I'm only mentioning this because it happened a lot. Uh, the plow couldn't get through, so if you see something like that, you just tell your neighbor to, uh, maybe pull in driveway or pull on the other side behind another car or something, so it'll be accessible, so they can get down the street. And, uh, when you're driving out there and stuff, you know, just stay safe, you're not in a hurry, but take your time, you know, getting there in one piece is one point.
On a hundred and thirty-eight, they plowed, but they didn't get close enough on the one side of the street where there's no parking at all. They didn't even come close to the curb, so only one car could get through there.
Okay.
Would I be offered an offer solution? They were doing it, they're gonna stop me. It's been known for a long time, when you have a lot of snows, that you have to get close to the curb. You've got to get right there, you can't make passes, that's what my mindset, you can't make passes down the middle and come back and be this far from the curb, because then when they plow, if you get another snow, it gets on top of it, and then when the car is parked, you can't plow that, so when people start parking, when you, when you start plowing higher snow, you have to go faster to toss that snow, so they can't even get the snow farther than where it is, and you have to go next to the curb. And the village has got a couple of pickup trucks that can fly around, I see one of the plows was still parked there, so, I, I don't know, and somebody told me, you don't have to pick up trucks to plow, and I'm like, I'm pretty sure you do, I could see one there, and those are the ones you gotta use to get it out. And sometimes they stop after the first few plows, that's it, you know, you gotta go back and catch those, because it'll cause you issues later.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Order is number twenty-twenty-one dash O dash zero-zero-one, an order is amending the established control commissioner, membership of police department, fire department, and other employees of the village of Burnham.
Okay, so, let me clarify this, so, so, um, to someone who I was saying here, I gave a separate raise, um, this is part of protocol, all that has to be covered in, so it has to be exclusive under that statute, so, I mean, this, the amendment of this on this, is a grant of two-dollar increase to brand and product, you know, the water department, the, uh, the contract that we had, waiting up for the last couple of years, and it's no longer here, so now you're going somewhere, there's a duty, a duty that you can win, sponsor, fund, and again, and, uh, we've got some aid contained, and so this was, this was two dollars.
So Brand's no longer a union employee?
I'm sorry?
The water department's no longer a union?
What did you say there?
Well, because normally by law, you can't give increases to union employees, the village can't, because you're signed by contract with the union at a certain dollar amount.
That's right.
Um, I'll ask for motion to.
Hmm. You don't count that.
Where did that money come from, from that, for that increase?
You know, that's how I remember it, uh, you can go ahead.
I'm just curious, that's all, you do what you want, I have this one.
I'll ask for motion to approve it, all the details have worked out.
He didn't even show the one that rose it up to him.
I'll ask for motion to approve.
A motion to approve order is number twenty-twenty-one dash O dash zero-zero-one, an order is amending the establishing of the salaries of elected officials, appointed officials, local liquor control commissioner, members of the police department, fire, fire department, and other employees of the village of Burnham.
So that motion is all about trustee Garcia, can we have a second, please?
Second.
Second, I trust you, Richard, I'm trying to.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Piper?
Thank you.
You have a thing to go to? Fine, I'll trust you.
Yeah, I have one, I have a COVID, an elderly couple of friends of mine from Headwish, they contacted St. Margaret's, and they went to St. Margaret's to get their vaccine. So nobody tells you to check with the hospital, but that's under that Franciscan, so they called them, and they scheduled an appointment, and they went there last week or some week before.
And if we get new information, we'll put it on the website, our Facebook page, try to get it out to the people, and we did put out a flyer in, in the water building this morning.
Even though they own in Chicago, they were able to get it handled, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, trustee. The company tells the trustee Richardson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have five safety tips to use during this, um, extremely cold season we're having. It's recommended that you keep your temperature set at a steady, safe, um, temperature of sixty-eight to seventy degrees. And, um, that'll help you from blowing out your furnace, and, you know, try to maintain your heating bills. And then it says to, uh, make sure faucets drip to, uh, keep your pipes from freezing and bursting. Do not use your ovens for a heating source or a grill. And if you have to use a space heater to keep it away from flammable objects and away from pets and kids. That's it, I thought it was bad, but basically, keep your temperatures, uh, the furnace set between sixty-eight and seventy. If you have to use a space heater, keep it away from curtains and anything else that could catch on fire. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Richardson. I'll take your report, any information, possible regulation, trustee Bonner?
Yes, um, Cayman Memorial Park District is having outdoor ice skating hours on Friday, four p.m. to eight p.m., Saturday, twelve p.m. to four p.m., Sunday, twelve p.m. to four p.m., five dollars general admission, three dollars skate rental, that's, that's going to be at the Cayman Memorial Park District, six twelve Wentworth Avenue, Cayman City. And thank, thank you for coming out, that's a reminder tour.
I don't have a mood lately, initially.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Friday, four to eight, Saturday, Sunday, twelve to four.
Okay, thank you. So then a presentation, a petition, communication, and more in the rest of the session. All right, we sadly announced the, uh, the passing of Ms. Eda Manuscu, meaning from Houghton, the passing of Ms. Josephine Zeminski, from Rain Bay, and Ms. Mary Jo Moryu, from Maginot, I have from almost a salad, trustee Cal, they called me this morning. All right, thank you.
Josephine Zeminski?
Do they have any unfinished bills?
I'm Dave's best friend.
She's the home, right?
There are new bills. I'll ask for motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion to flow by trustee Clay Wilson, we have a second. So the trustee Garcia will protect the motion.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner? Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Piper?
Motion passed, thank you, to adjourn, thank you.